...street and also called order the regular meeting of the Macon Bibb County Commission, which will follow immediately behind the public hearing. We're glad that each and every one of you are here tonight. You're always welcome. And we want to start this evening, as we customarily do, with an invocation and pledge of allegiance. Reverend Penny, Cameron Pennybacker is going to give us an invocation. And I'll also ask Carmickia Sutton and Jonika Hill to come up and stand behind. And when he's through with the invocation, they'll lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So would you please stand as you are able for our invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the first city council gathering since the shooting at Tree of Life Synagogue in Pittsburgh, the Squirrel Hill neighborhood there. But for the grace of God, we would be calling out neighborhoods in our community as well. And so I ask to offer the invocation tonight, knowing that there are moments when a specific community's prayer becomes our common prayer. This is neither an opportunity to claim Judaism as everyone's faith, rather, an opportunity to uplift the specificity and graciousness of that tradition in light of this tragedy. To that end, we will later propose in working with the city attorney and already in consulting with Larry Schlesinger Resolution condemning that act of violence and claiming our community's stance as one of diversity and honor. To that end, I offer a prayer this evening by Rabbi Harold Kushner. He penned this in 2003, and I think applicable for us tonight. If it is your tradition, please join me in prayer. A prayer for the world. Let the rain come down and wash away ancient grudges, the bitter hatreds held and nourished over generations. Let the rains wash away the memory of hurt, the neglect. Then let the sun come out and fill the sky with rainbows. Let the warmth of the sun heal us whenever we are broken, so that we can share the joys and feel the sorrows of our neighbors. And let the light of the sun be so strong that we will see all people as our neighbors. Amen.
Amen.
He joined us in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Reverend Pennybacker is the executive director of Diversity Assets, and we appreciate his being here and offering such a poignant and timely invocation. Our 4-H members are Carmickia Sutton, who is a ninth grader at Southwest High School. And although she is small in stature, she is a fierce contender. Carmickia is on the praise dance team at her church, loves to sing and dance for others. Carmickia has been in the 4-H club since the sixth grade. This year, she's competing in the festive foods for health category, where she will display her cooking skills by creating her famous enchiladas. And Jonika is Jonika Hill Senior at Central High School. When she graduates in 2018, she is planning to attend Georgia Military College for two years, then transfer to Kennesaw State. She'll be majoring in sports medicine. And once she finishes college, be serving in the National Guard for eight years. Jonika has been in 4-H since the fifth grade. She competes in, for Bibb County, is the 4-H Military Ambassador. She's a member of National Technical Honor Society, Beta Club, Skills USA, Key Club, National Honor Society, Delta Academy, Junior ROTC, Key Club, FBLA, Upward Bound, Educational Talent Search, and Streets to Success on Houston Avenue. She loves helping others, and her kind spirit radiates in all that she does. Y'all help me thank Carmickia and Jonika for being here. And also to wish them all the best in their continued education. That's really, really great. Next item on our agenda is approval of minutes. And the minutes of our pre-commissioned meeting held on October the 16th and our regular commission meeting on the 16th have been prepared and distributed ahead of time. Are there changes, additions, or corrections? If not, can I get a motion to approve the minutes? Got a motion by Commissioner Shepherd, second, by Commissioner Allen. Further discussion, hearing none. All in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye, oppose no. The ayes have it, and the minutes are approved. Next, our invited guest, and I am delighted to ask Dr. Christopher Blake, the president of Middle Georgia State University, to come and talk to us about the significance of the upcoming Veterans Day and the services and ceremonies that will be held here in Macon in that regard. Dr. Blake, thank you so much for being here with us, sir.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, commissioners, and colleagues. It's my honor to be here. My name is Chris Blake, and I hope that this week, with all of the importance going on in our national life and our political life, we can find the right tone and temperament to honor Veterans Day. It's a special Veterans Day, and that's the purpose of my brief remarks here. Many of us have family, in my case grandparents, but even in Macon-Bibb, I know some individuals who have parents who fought in the First World War. And this week, on Veterans Day, we reach the centennial of the armistice that concluded that bloody and terrible event in human history. On the 11th hour of the 11th day of the 11th month, 1918, the armistice was signed, and hostility ceased, and the famous phrase "all quiet on the western front" was literally born and has remained a phrase in our vernacular since. At the time that the armistice was signed, four million Americans had been called up, and two million of them were in Europe. By the time that the armistice took place, 120,000 American servicemen had paid the ultimate price, and another 300,000 American servicemen were casualties of the war. Those numbers were dreadful, but the war itself stood out at a highest level in all of human history in terms of carnage. Ten million men died in the war that in Britain is known as the 1914-18 War, a war that the U.S. entered in April of 1917, and then participated until the Allied success on the armistice day of the 11th day and the 11th month. It was, at the time, talked about as the war to end all wars. But of course, sadly and tragically, it did not. Indeed, it was a precursor, and most historians today see the Second World War, just 20 years later, as the resumption of the same struggle against militarism that was there at the roots of the First World War. Macon has a couple of unique attributes in that there is a war memorial on Mulberry Street and a much more visible one on Coleman Hill. And I am grateful to Macon-Bibb because Middle Georgia State University has spent some time in renovating that memorial, and the Macon-Bibb has, did agree some years ago to help us illuminate it, so now at night, it is even more invisible on Coleman Hill. It is a memorial commemorating the death of 73 Maconites, who were members of the 151st Machine Gun Battalion of the Rainbow Division, a very, very significant division, of whom MacArthur was a soldier in that division at the time. Many Maconites have family. I know of at least two. Mrs. Joan Godsey, the former First Lady of Mercy University. Her father arrived at the front line on the 11th of November and was frustrated that the hostilities had ceased just as he arrived there. I've explained to Joan, I think she was very fortunate that they did cease when he arrived there. We will be commemorating this Veterans Day in a number of ceremonies at the university, and it is my hope that the city will also help provide an opportunity in which Veterans Day is also a memorial to this special historic event. There will be a ceremony on Monday, in which I'm grateful that Mayor Rickett will join me at 11 o'clock on Coleman Hill, in which we will honor our veterans, and we will remember the centennial of the end of the war. There will also be, across the nation, on Sunday, the United States World War I Commission has requested that church bells ring their bells at 11 o'clock in the morning, across the whole nation, at whichever time 11 is in that time zone. And it is my hope and my request, Mr. Mayor, that the commission will encourage our churches here in Macon-Bibb to similarly ring their bells at 11 o'clock on Sunday morning. And that's the specific request that I give to you, sir, that if you can help us promote that, so that we can have the sound of beautiful bells on a very special Veterans Day, remembering also the centennial. I think that will be a fitting way in which we can thank our current servicemen and servicewomen. We can honor our veterans, and we can remember the many, many Americans who paid the ultimate sacrifice, 100 years ago and since, in a century that has seen unprecedented warfare, but also the defense of our freedoms, which today we exercise at the ballot box because of their courage, their sacrifice, and their willingness to go and defend freedom and liberty. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much, President Blake, and we appreciate your being here and appreciate your efforts to help us recognize the significance of the monument that we have on Coleman Hill and the significance of the monument to the 73 soldiers from this area who lost their lives in the World War. You think, I think you know this, but my wife's grandfather was in the 151st Machine Gun Battalion, lost his leg, and was in the hospital there in France for quite some time. And it was doubtful whether he would survive his injuries. But in, and in fact, the War Department erroneously sent his family a telegram to say that he'd been killed in the war. And it was only several days later that he was able to get word to his family that, no, in fact, he had not. Came home and wore a prosthetic device, which at the time, it was quite clumsy and bulky, and he always had to swing his leg, and he walked with a very characteristic gait, as he would try to lift and swing the fake leg forward. But he went on to be the tax commissioner for the city of Macon, and they are very proud of him, and they are quite proud of his role in World War I. So thank you very much for helping. All of the families take pride in those that served, not just in World War I, but World War II and the Korean War, heaven forbid, the Vietnam War, the First Gulf War, and now Afghanistan and Iraq. We continue this. So I look forward to being with you at 11 o'clock on Monday morning, which is the day that the United States officially commemorates, since the 11th is on Sunday. But it will be closed here in Government Center, and most governments are going to be closing on that Monday. So join us if you can at 11 o'clock, Coleman Hill, and I look forward to being with you then. Thank you very much.
I look forward to it too, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you so much. Mayor Protem Tillman has asked for a few minutes to talk to us about another significant event that's coming up here shortly, and has even got a little display out front. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, sir. Yes, as you can see before you are the bins that serve as the Mayor and Commission Annual Christmas Modake. And we're asking the community, the commission members, let's exceed the $3,101 that we raised last year. Just to give you a little history about the Mayor's Modake. Originally, the Georgia Municipal Association began the Christmas Modake back in 1958 at the request of Betty Van Diver, the wife of then-Governor Ernest Van Diver, as a way of providing holiday gifts for patients of Georgia mental health hospitals. Originally established to provide gifts to clients at Central State Hospital in Milledgeville, the program has been extended since the 1980s to support state and regional hospitals. And this year, we're asking employees and departments who donate the most monetarily in gifts that are listed will receive a $100 Visa gift card. So just so you know, bins are here. You can bring your donated items here, also out at South Bibb, here in Macon-Bibb Government Center, and on the commission side as well. And so we encourage commissioners to donate and give. You can start off with as little as $25, so we encourage you. And that will be taking place through November 7th through November 30th. And then we'll gather with the local sheriff and fire department, along with citizens, and we'll have a modake and transfer the items up on December 4th. So it's a great occasion every year, and it has been extended to all of us. So please contribute and be a part of it, and you'll be seeing more and hearing more about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Very worthwhile, and I certainly plan on contributing to it. And I think it's always good to help remember those people with mental challenges and disabilities, especially when they're unable to get out and get around. A lot of times, this is the only Christmas that they know, and they respectfully request toiletry items, as well as blankets, warm pajamas, things like that, or just give cash, and they'll use that to buy the necessary things for them. It's very worthwhile, and I thank you, Mayor Protem, for taking the lead on this again for us this year. Next item on our agenda, oops, you know what? Yeah, the next item on the agenda, is anybody here to talk to us about the use of eminent domain to condemn 1354 Telfair Street, I believe is the address? Double check that. But the Telfair Street address that we're using to try to assemble the real estate for the Triangle Park at the intersection of Elm Street and Telfair, the railroad behind it, right across from Ebenezer Baptist Church? Anybody here to address us about that item, the use of eminent domain to acquire one of the remaining parcels that we need? Okay. Then we'll conclude the public hearing on that and move on to the rest of our agenda, which is, the next item, public comments on agenda items. This is an opportunity for people to talk about items that are on the agenda for action tonight, so that we hear from you before we vote. And Mike Odom wants to talk to us about several items that are on our agenda. Mike, thank you very much for being here, sir. You're recognized for five minutes.
I won't need all five minutes. That probably shocks you. But a couple of things. I know it's under a new agenda item, but please don't vote to pay Kavanaugh Consulting to do some work for you on the new pension plan. You've got volunteers here who are highly qualified professionals, live here. They've said, we'll do it. We don't need to be spending money for those folks. Also, on the agenda, on the new business, no offense to Commissioner Watkins, but you cannot appoint someone from this body to serve on a subordinate body that receives funding. That's a violation of the Georgia Code of Ethics for Municipal Governments. It's called incompatible offices. So either no commissioner can serve on the Community Enhancement Authority, or you need to sell the Little Richard House and let the Community Enhancement Authority act on their own. 9A is old business. Let me just say, first of all, that this appears to, going from five minutes to three minutes for public speaking, is an effort to limit or squash dissenting public opinion. Now, public opinion is going to reflect the behavior of its leadership. I can tell you that right now. And this was a very controversial last six months, a lot of accusations thrown around, a lot of aggression toward people. So you have to expect, that's what's going to show up here at this microphone. You know, politics and pandering kind of both start with the letter P. You know, we've got to start listening to the public. I want to make a comment. This kind of leads into one. There's one particular commissioner that I think has been, in the past, has been kind of unduly harsh on some of the people that had a disagreeing position. After the last commission meeting, and I have spoken to that and addressed it directly, after the last commission meeting, when it was adjourned, this commissioner came to the floor, and he and I had a very, very constructive conversation. It was very cordial, it was very polite, very professional. At the end of the meeting, there's still very little we agree on. There's very little common ground. But that's what you've got to do, folks. So when you see hostility and anger here, it's going to reflect what's happening up there. Mr. Mayor, you let one get completely out of hand about a month ago. Silence conveys approval, agreement. You should have shut it down. You should have said, that's not proper etiquette. And if that ever happens again, God forbid it happens again, you need to shut it down and if necessary, remove that commissioner from this chamber. Just because somebody has a different opinion from you does not make them a dog. When you start attacking and calling names, you have now become the dog. So, Mr. Mayor, as the presiding officer, when you start having attacks at one another and name-calling and lifting out of context certain scriptures, you've got to shut that down. The attack had fragmented and completely out of context. The New Testament book of James, chapter 2, verse 17. Well, I could have a lot of fun lifting things out of context, because two verses later, James talks about demons, and six verses later, he talks about a prostitute. Now, that would be wrong for me to do, but the point is, that was not professional conduct. That was reprehensible. When the public sees that, they think it's okay. So I would urge you, don't hire Kavanaugh. We've got qualified professionals here that said they'd help you. Don't limit it to three minutes. Listen to the public, act on what they're saying, but be professional yourself. And I appreciate, I know I've complained a lot, but I appreciate the respect that the commissioner showed to me. Again, we didn't agree when it was over, very little common ground, but we can share ideas without being ugly. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Odom. We appreciate your comments and appreciate your being here with us tonight. Next item on our agenda are reports from standing committees. The first is Operations and Finance Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Watkins. Chairman Watkins?
Thank you, sir. The Operations and Finance Committee met on October 23rd, 2018, and took the following action. The committee heard monthly reports on county finances, human resources, and healthcare. We took the following action. We allocated Blythe funds in the amount of $315,000 for the development of West Macon baseball field improvements. We allocated $300,000 from general fund for demolition of blighted structures. Committee approved an additional $40,710 from SPOSS funds for additional bottom golf course improvements. The committee accepted the following grants: $155,000 grant award from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for Victims of Crime Act Continuation for the Solicitor General's Office. $101,341,000 from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for Victims of Crime Act Continuation Award, which requires a match of $25,335,000 to be awarded to the District Attorney's Office. And $65,301,000 from the Office of Justice Program's Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant to the Bibb County Sheriff's Office. Also, on November 13th, Tuesday at 5:30, there will be a public hearing on changes to our current alcohol ordinance. This concludes the reports of Operations and Finance Committee.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Watkins. Next, committee is Economic and Community Development Committee, and that report will be given to us by Vice Chairman Wynn. Vice Chairman Wynn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Economic and Community Development Committee met on October 23rd, 2018, and took the following action. The committee approved permitting the lawful service of alcoholic beverages at the John Drew Smith Memorial Tournament. This concludes the report of the Economic and Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Wynn. The next committee report is the Public Safety Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Shepherd. Chairman Shepherd?
The Public Safety Committee met also on October 23rd and took the following action. The committee approved the ordinance to designate an open records office for the Bibb County Sheriff's Office. And that concludes the report of the Public Safety Committee.
Thank you, Chairman Shepherd. And finally, Facilities and Engineering Committee, and that report will be given to us by Chairman Jones. Chairman Jones?
Yes, sir. Excuse me. Facilities and Engineering met October the 23rd as well. Committee approved the transfer of 181 Lower Bay Street to the Urban Development Authority. And the second item, the committee also approved the process of eminent domain to acquire the property of 1454 Telfair Street. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Chairman Jones. Next is Consent Agenda. These are applications for alcohol beverage licenses that have been received and processed through the normal process. And each of these applications is now accompanied by the requisite materials and information, which consist of a satisfactory background check by the sheriff's office on the applicant, a certification by the Business Development Services Office that the appropriate fees have been paid for the license being sought, a certificate from planning and zoning, that the zoning is appropriate for the store where it's located, a measurement form, which is a certification from the county engineer, that the location complies with all the distant separation requirements, and finally, a copy of the ad that ran in the Macon Telegraph. So each of these applications is accompanied by all of that certification. And they are, the business name Spotlight One Incorporated, doing business as Quick Zip at 3518 Jeffersonville Road, for packaged beer and wine sales to go at that location. The second is by Romapier LLC, doing business as The Circle G at 3821 Northside Drive. That also is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. Excuse me. The third is by AJDJ LLC, doing business as The Quick Serve at 2260 Shurling Drive. That is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. And next is Macon Pies LLC, doing business as Your Pie at 536 Poplar Street, and that is for beer, wine, and draft beer to be consumed on the premises at that location. The next is JR Tavern LLC at 2440 Riverside Drive. That is for liquor, mixed drinks, beer, and wine, and draft beer, all to be consumed on the premises at that location. Next is J. Matagi LLC, doing business as Welcome at 4505 Broadway. That is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. Next is Saya and Rea LLC, doing business as Marathon Food Mart at 6199 Thomaston Road in Macon. That is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. And next is Sri Sahaj LLC, doing business as Hartley Package. That's at 4515 Hartley Bridge Road, and that is for liquor, beer, and wine package sales to go from that location. Next is Donwin Inc., doing business as Family Foods at 605 Pinona. That is for beer and wine package sales to go at that location. The committee of the whole recommends approval and the issuance of these The committee of the whole recommends approval and the issuance of these licenses as requested. Is there further discussion? If not, all in favor of the issuance of the licenses signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and those licenses will be issued as requested. That brings us then now to Old Business. And the first item of Old Business is an ordinance to amend the governmental decision-making process by changing the time limits to public, for public comments, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to amend section two dash thirty-seven of the inaugural code of ordinances for Macon-Bibb County relating to the government decision-making process of the County Commission by consolidating public comment periods and changing the time limit for public comments to three minutes and to provide for other lawful purposes.
There was a committee amendment that did not change the process, it left them separate. So the agenda items, comments were taken first, non-agenda items still taken at the last, but changed the time to three minutes. The committee of the whole recommends approval of the ordinance as amended. Is there further discussion? Commissioner Bibbins?
I'm in favor of the process we used. I think sometimes people go over the five minutes, I mean, that's kind of a problem for me, but I would like to see us continue the five minutes. And also, what are you doing, the items on the agenda first? And the, and those not on the agenda last, I mean, that just seems a practical way to do it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bibbins. Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mister Mayor, and I agree with Commissioner Bibbins that we should leave it at five minutes. I mean, for the most part, you don't have a lot of public comments, only when there are things such as the budget that are very important to discuss. So I'd like to remain with the five minutes for the public to give their full discussion of what they wanted to address with us. And I want a clarification, is, are we gonna have the before and after thing? Or are we combining that as one public comment?
No, we would still have the before and after. You still have the comments on agenda items heard first, and comments on non-agenda items deferred until the last.
Well, I think we should remain with five minutes.
Is there further discussion? Mayor Protem, tell me.
Yes, sir, Mister Mayor, motion to table.
Got a motion, got a motion to second at the table, that's non-debatable. All in favor of tabling this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Woo, didn't have five to pass, and I know that much. So the motion to table fails, didn't have, didn't have five votes, so we're back to the main question. Is there further discussion on the main, main question? Commissioner Jones?
But to let it remain as it is at five minutes.
Well, there's no reason to amend it, if it doesn't pass, it'll be five minutes.
Okay, okay. So, so they don't need to amend it, if it doesn't pass, it stays at five minutes, right? That's what, that's what I'm saying.
Well, the idea of tabling, Mister Mayor, was that it was voted on by the commission as a whole. And I think just because of what's going on tonight, and I didn't even see till a minute ago that commissioner, one of the other commissioners that came in, so because of the importance of it, and then the sponsor, and the co-sponsor wasn't here, I'm just suggesting that we table it because I thought we cleared up some, some issues in the committee of the whole and just were trying to send it back to, to take care of that, that's all.
Okay, so that's not a motion to reconsider?
Well, I mean, you know, usually if you, if you've got an issue of concern, then you wanna try at least send it back to, you know, you know, address some of those issues, 'cause I mean, same thing as far as just bringing it back up, so. You know, and maybe I should've spoke on it before and gave a reason why I was suggesting that, that we, we tabled it, but whatever.
I'm sorry, I cut you off.
I was just saying that I support it as it is because I just thought it was, you know, clarified for us. And so for those that would, may not have that clarification, 'cause we, it was in the committee of the whole, could just have that option. So, but I do support it as it is.
Okay. Commissioner Jones, I've still got your light on, did you already finish your comment?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there further discussion? If not, we're back to the main motion, those that are in favor of the committee amendment, the ordinance as amended by the committee, though, which would reduce the time to three minutes, signify by raising a hand, let me count the hands. If you wanna limit it to three minutes, let me see your hand. Two, and those that wanted to leave it at five, let me see your hands. One, two, three, four, five. So this fails, the ordinance as amended fails, so two to five. I'm getting there. All right, now that takes us to item B. Item B is a resolution about asking, expanding the duties of the Healthcare and Retirement Benefit Committee, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to expand the duties of the Healthcare and Retirement Benefits Committee to include making recommendations regarding the components of the new Bibb County, Macon-Bibb County Employee Four-O-One-A Defined Contribution Plan and Four-Fifty-Seven-B Deferred Compensation Plan, evaluating the RFP prepared by the consultant regarding the Four-O-One-A and Four-Fifty-Seven-B plans, monitoring and making recommendations for improvement regarding the open enrollment process, assisting in forming a wellness committee, and setting initiatives for wellness benefits and for other lawful purposes.
Committee of the whole recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to appropriate the necessary funds from the appropriate sources for the West Macon Ball Field Improvements, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to amend ordinance O-dash-eighteen-dash-oh-oh-three-oh to appropriate two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars of blight bond funds from District Three, Six, and Seven Blight Funds, plus three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in two thousand and seventeen SPOS Bond Funds and our two thousand and eighteen SPOS revenues from the Blight Remediation Blight Bond Number Two Line Item for the funding of the West Macon Baseball Field Improvements and for other purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is a resolution to approve the three hundred thousand dollars budgeted in the, this year's budget for demolition of the Blight Consultants' Demolition Priorities List, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the Macon-Bibb County Blight Consultants' Demolition Priorities List to authorize expenditure of up to three hundred thousand dollars of funds from the General Fund Demolition Line Item for the purpose of demolition such blighted properties to authorize the filing of demolition liens against each property so demolished and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by, ooh, wee, look at that picture.
Thank you for that one.
We got him, don't we? All in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to accept a Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Grant, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a Criminal Justice Coordinating Council two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen Victims of Crime Act Continuation Award allocation in the amount of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, five hundred and four dollars, requiring a matching fund amount of thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars to the Bibb County Solicitor General in substantially the same form as attached here to as Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
The Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is another acceptance of a Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Grant, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a Criminal Justice Coordinating Council two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen Victims of Crime Act Continuation Award allocation in the amount of a hundred and one thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars, requiring a matching fund amount of twenty-five thousand, three hundred and thirty-five dollars and a comp advocate allocation in the amount of seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars with the matching fund amount having been waived to the Macon Judicial Circuit District Attorney's Office in substantially the same form as attached here to as Exhibit A and for other lawful purposes.
So the previous one was for the Solicitor General's Office in the State Court. This is for the District Attorney's Office in the Superior Court, and the Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. That takes us to item G, which is an ordinance approving and authorizing the appropriation of funds for Bowden Golf Course, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission approving and authorizing the appropriation of forty thousand dollars, forty thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars from the two thousand and seventeen SPOS Bond Proceeds and our two thousand and eighteen SPOS Revenues from two thousand and twenty-three Parks and Recreation Bowden Line Item to two thousand and eighteen Parks and Recreation Bowden Line Item and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. Next is a resolution to accept a grant, another grant from the Office of Justice Programs, and I'll ask the clerk to read that one by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the acceptance of a grant from the Office of Justice Programs FY eighteen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program in the amount of sixty-five thousand, three hundred and fifty-one dollars to be used by the Bibb County Sheriff's Office and the Bibb County Drug Court with no local match and for other lawful purposes.
Operations and Finance Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is an ordinance to designate an open records officer for the sheriff's office, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
An ordinance of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to enact a new section twenty-seven of the inaugural code of ordinances for Macon-Bibb County related to designation of an open records officer for the Bibb County Sheriff's Office and to provide for other lawful purposes.
Public Safety Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir, refresh my memory, was this from the current budget that the sheriff has?
No, that, well, I really ought to let the clerk speak. She's been overwhelmed by requests for records from the sheriff's office, and the sheriff would have to get involved to be sure that it was properly redacted and didn't give out the information that was under investigation, and it was kind of a back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
Discussion, I was just curious.
Right, so this was, this was just to streamline it, so what have I missed?
So what we normally do is I get it, and I might get it via email, and they might get the open records request via paper copy. And so we were duplicating it. So they do have an open records person who I normally work with in connection to filling out these requests, and she's just gonna be designated their open records officer. So we'll still be working together, but it will take a good bit of work off me.
Is there further discussion? Commissioner Nguyen?
So, so my understanding is that is not an extra cost because this person's already in position, okay.
Within the duties of somebody who's already there.
It's within the duties of someone who's already there.
Thank you.
Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the ordinance is adopted. And next is a resolution to allow the Macon Tennis Association to serve alcoholic beverages for one night at John Drew Smith, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the Macon Tennis Association to permit the lawful service of alcoholic beverages at the John Drew Smith Memorial Tournament to be held at the John Drew Smith Tennis Center on November the seventh, two thousand and eighteen, to permit attendees to consume alcoholic beverages at the John Drew Smith Tennis Center during the tournament, terminate, and to provide for other lawful purposes.
The Economic and Community Development Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is item K, which is a resolution to transfer the parcel on Lower Bay Street to the Urban Redevelopment Authority for sale, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to transfer that two-point-three-three-plus acres parcel of property located adjacent to the vehicle maintenance facility at one-eight-one Lower Bay to the Urban Redevelopment Authority and for other purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to use eminent domain to acquire parcel property on Tail Fair Street, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission to approve the exercise of eminent domain to acquire in fee simple the property commonly known as one-four-five-four Tail Fair Street, located in Macon, Bibb County, Georgia, and for other purposes.
The Facilities and Engineering Committee recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. Next is a resolution to authorize the purchase of some new sound equipment for the Coliseum, and I'll ask the clerk to read that by caption.
A resolution of the Macon-Bibb County Commission authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Mancun Media Systems, Inc. in the amount of two hundred and sixty-eight thousand, sixteen dollars and sixty-five cents for sound system upgrades to be installed at the Macon Coliseum, payable from SPOS Bond Proceeds and our SPOS Revenues Culture and Public Coliseum Line Item and for other lawful purposes.
The committee of the whole recommends approval, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the resolution signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and the resolution is adopted. There are a number of items of new business that we read at the pre-commission meeting. Is there a motion to dispense with the reading of the new business? By Commissioner Nguyen, is there a second by Commissioner Shepherd? Further discussion, hearing none, all in favor of dispensing with the reading of the new business signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. The ayes have it, and we'll dispense with the reading of the new business. This is, will be printed on the, the agenda that comes out on Friday along with some other new business that may come down during the week on the agenda. So check the agenda that comes out, it's posted on Friday to see what is going to be discussed next Tuesday, beginning at nine o'clock AM in committee meetings behind us here. That'll be November the thirteenth, November the thirteenth. That brings us now to the public comments on non-agenda items. And we have a couple of people that wish to address us on non-agenda items. First, Mister Wade Horton wants to talk to us about the Macon Transit Authority. Mister Horton? Thank you very much for being with us, sir, you are recognized for five minutes.
How y'all doing today?
Fine, sir, how are you?
Good. First, before I get into that, I wanna thank y'all for, I didn't see that on the agenda, but thank y'all for extending or letting the five minutes remain because sometimes there's a lot to say in such a short period of time. But what I also want y'all to consider is moving the comments for non-agenda items from the end to the front, well, to the part where the other agenda comments are. from the end to the front, well, to the part where the other agenda, uh, comments are, because there was a situation last time we was, I was here, that I was trying to speak, and there was not a quorum at the end, um, which means that you had to cancel the meeting, and I was watching the cer, uh, the meeting on TV, and you called my name, and I wasn't here, so, and that sends a message that you, sometimes that it seemed like y'all don't wanna hear what we gotta say if, if you're not here at the end. I can't really see, so, can you tell me who was still here before I get into?
I'm sorry, sir. Say again?
Who was present, so I know I'm, who I'm speaking to.
Uh, Commissioner Wynn, uh, is here, Commissioner Bibbins is here, I'm here, Commissioner Allen's here, Commissioner Shepherd is here, and Commissioner Watkins is here. Uh, Commissioner Jones just stepped out, I'm not sure if he'll be back momentarily, and Commissioner Tillman just stepped out, and I'm not sure if he'll be back momentarily.
Okay, thank you. Uh, what I wanna say briefly, uh, with the Transit Authority is that, uh, they are considering, uh, tabling, uh, changing some routes and out of certain areas of neighborhoods that rely heavily on the services rendered by the Transit Authority. Very good service for people, needs improvement, and that's why I speak a lot about it, and that's why Ms. Glover speaks a lot about it, because it's a good service that needs improvements. We need to, uh, encourage you to, um, make contacts with the current CEO, Mr. Craig Ross, and, and make sure that he's not taking services away from your areas that your constituents ride. Very important. The, the reason cited is because people in those areas are not riding. No, no study was done except for they decide which day of the week they decide they're gonna ride, and then they say, well, no one is riding this route, so we probably need to cut this one back. They also gonna draft it up and say it's because you guys cut funding, and I've said before, that's not it. It's not on y'all, because if it was, you wanna be considering trying to find, cut these routes to send them to the other side of town near Amazon and, and the south side. We need to be proactive because it's coming down, and they gonna have some public hearings about whatever changes they decide to have, and it's gonna impact people in all of y'all's districts where the buses ride. Please check and make sure that, uh, your concerns are, are known to them because it's going to happen. We are at a, at a, at a point where we need s- some support. I mean, we're bringing information, giving you guys updates on information that you do not get, I'm sure. I've been told by several commissioners that they really don't know what's going on until we come and tell them. Please do not let our work go in vain. Investigate this because so many people in districts of this city utilize this service, and to, uh, disrupt it for whatever reason, it's not good. They told you guys when the budget was going through its, its working out stages, that when they got through and y'all approved the budget, they were at, uh, buses back to their respective routes. That has not happened. On-time performance of those buses has dipped tremendously to sixty-nine percent, which means that your constituents in your districts, these people are having to wait extra, uh, time for a bus to come. That's not acceptable, and the reason is, is because these routes that had three buses have two, and the ones that have two buses on those routes now have one. And of course, we know that people are gonna have to wait, and on-time performance is gonna be down. And because of that, they're blaming y'all because they say y'all cut their budget. That's the reason that they're giving, but that's not the reason that I am buying for that. Because if your budget cuts because of that, you wouldn't be trying to send these buses to other routes that you're trying to make new. Please get more involved. Do not let our work go in vain. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Horton. We appreciate you, appreciate you being in, appreciate your comments. Uh, next, Ms. Dawn Richardson, uh, Ms. Richardson, always glad to see you, sir, and understand you've got some old grassroots, uh, reflections that you wanted to share with us. Thank you very much for your patience. You were recognized for five minutes, sir.
Okay. Mayor Rickert, I sincerely believe that, uh, the Peyton Anderson Foundation shall honor the grant proposal submitted by the Lynnwood Cemetery Association Incorporated for the revitalization of that African-American historical landmark. Based upon my molecular memory or DNA through the oral traditions of my paternal heritage here in Macon, was connected with the city of Macon white lord, or white warlords, or white inner sanctum ruling class since antebellum days, in their capacity as townhouse servants. Mr. Peyton Anderson and his family was a member of this white inner sanctum, and there has always existed a codependency between, uh, the servants class of my father's family and an African-American community, which I have evolved here in Macon with that of, of the white inner sanctum, and we were privy as to the unwritten rules that these white warlords ran their socioeconomic political empires, not only here in central Georgia, but in their large commercial farms in south Georgia, and their interest in the transportation, label, retail distribution and manufacturings, and these same markets in their former colonial investments in an international markets that they continue to enjoy this day in which we call inherent wealth. I think Mr. Peyton Anderson will turn over in his grave that our ancestors who helped create his empire and the white inner sanctum cannot receive the necessary forms, for, funds from his foundation to restore Lynnwood Cemetery to honor our ancestors, ancestor in a system of perpetuity. The grant proposal would create a trust fund where the dividend checks and these investment funds would be reinvested into the Lynnwood Cemetery Association to sustain, uh, the cemetery in perpetuity. Thank you very much, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, and we, we, we appreciate you bringing that, uh, to our attention, appreciate you, your, your presence here with us tonight. Uh, we have reached the end, and no further, uh, non-agenda, uh, comment, uh, request. Got a, a point, a point of, of personal privilege or request?
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Uh, I just wanted to send, uh, kudos to the Transit Authority and to the director, Mr. Craig Ross. Uh, there are some, uh, citizens over in the Bloomfield Road area at Colony West who asked for a, a seat or, or a bench, and within forty-eight hours, uh, he made sure that they had that bench over there for seating on, uh, at Colony West, so I just wanted to publicly say, uh, thank you, uh, and thank you to his entire department for making that happen within, uh, forty-eight hours.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Protem. Appreciate that. Uh, Commissioner Bibbins, you, you have a point of personal privilege, sir?
Yeah, um, maybe I should've brought this up earlier, but, uh, a, a concern about the land bank authority, I think we have a member whose term has expired or will be in the next few days. Without that member, we cannot hold meetings 'cause we are a little short, so, um, I didn't know if it was possible to deal with that tonight, or, or how we handle it.
No, what I need to do, uh, I, I think Tom Ellington, uh, i- it needs to be, uh, renominated, and I think we've got somebody else that left and left a vacancy on the board that I need to nominate somebody to fill, so, y- if you would get with me tonight and let me know if you've got somebody in mind that you think would be a good, uh, person to nominate, uh, then that'll have to go through the regular, uh, of confirmation process, but I'm sure we can try to expedite that.
I was thinking of Tom Ellington. Um, if he's not there by the next meeting time, you know, we just won't be able to hold a meeting.
Oh, my, okay, well, I, I, we, we, and, and y'all are doing some very important work for us in blight condemnations and other things, so shame on me for n- not, not getting that done, uh, quicker. I, I'll try, I don't think we can do it tonight, but I, I'll certainly try to take every action I can to, to get it expedited.
Okay, 'cause I don't know what his expiration date is, I mean.
Right, okay. I, I, I'll work on that quick as I can. All right. Um, is, any other points of personal privilege? Uh, there being none, can I get a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by Commissioner Allen, and without objection, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate you being here.